Call to order the February 14th meeting of the Morrisville Planning and Zoning Board, and ask Sanjay to give us an invitation.
As we gather here today, as the Planning and Zoning Board members, we pray that we are ever mindful of the opportunity to render our services to our fellow citizens and to our community, keeping in mind always the enduring values of life exerting our efforts in those areas and those things upon which future generations can build upon with confidence. Today also happens to be the anniversary of the Parkland shooting. We ask that you hold with your love and strength the families who are grieving and for the loved ones they are missing. Please also grant our soldiers, police, firefighters, and all of us the courage and skill to carry out our duties for the greater good of the community. We ask that your blessings would rest upon this team and you give us the great vision and enthusiasm to do our work, strive for a better world.
Thank you, Sanjay. Any changes to the agenda from the staff side?
No, sir.
What was the agenda? I'll move on. Any changes or comments on the minutes from January the 10th? I'll entertain a motion. Motion in a second. All in favor say aye. Ben, I think you're going to give us a presentation, item number five.
All right, this is relatively short presentation, but just, I think there were a couple of members who requested information that council had received this information a couple of years ago about the Aviation Parkway NC-54 intersection alternative. So I wanted to just provide the Planning and Zoning Board the same information. So as some background, NC DOT is currently working on some preliminary designing and environmental permitting work for widening of Aviation Parkway, which is a funded project. It's funded for construction beginning in fiscal year 2023, so it's still several years out. As part of that project, they, NC DOT, actually extended the study area of the project to extend over the railroad tracks so they could study the intersection of 54 Aviation Parkway, Morrisville Carpenter Road, and the railroad tracks, study that entire intersection altogether to determine if there was any improvement that could be done as part of this project to hopefully improve the movement and mobility through that intersection. As part of that study, they looked at both grade separation and at-grade improvements. However, they did ultimately determine that there's no, there's not adequate funding in the project for any grade separation improvements. However, they still may prefer grade separation as ultimate solution. One, because it would seal the railroad corridor with the increase in rail traffic through the corridor over the next 10 years or so that's anticipated, it's going to become a lot busier. And so DOT has been working slowly to seal the railroad corridor as much as possible. And this is one intersection that they've continued to express interest in being able to close the at-grade crossing at least. And then also the going to grade separation in the future would decrease congestion on both 54 and Aviation Parkway. But again, the grade separation's not funded, it's not part of the widening project. However, DOT did look at a few grade separation alternatives as part of the project, just to get an idea of what it could cost, what are some potential alignments. And these will need to be further studied in the future if a grade separation is ever funded. But, so the alignments they looked at that were shown to council a couple of years ago included essentially raising the road over the railroad and NC-54 in the existing location. And as you can see on this map here, Aviation Parkway would go over both the railroad and 54. 54 would be moved slightly to the north and a loop, square loop interchange would be constructed adjacent to Cotton, right around Cotton Road now, where Cotton Road comes in now, and to get back to 54. And it may be hard to see, but in the preliminary designs, when DOT looked at this, they estimated that the roadway height would be around 35 feet at its highest point. So it would not be, it would not be a low bridge, it would be significantly high. And as you can see, even in front of Cotton Place, it would be going from 23 feet down to six feet and wouldn't actually reach existing grade until past Liberty Hill Pass and the existing park entrance there. So it would, as you can see, very impactful and actually would, on the other side, wouldn't tie back to existing grade till actually past Town Hall Drive. The second alignment they looked at was to move the road down to the south and take it actually through a good portion of our park property back behind the Cotton Place houses that are on the south side of Aviation Parkway, again, with a square loop type interchange, but that would be going to the south and would, you know, under this concept would have required taking out some houses. And as you can see on this one, the roadway height gets to around 40 feet over the creek, so it's even a little bit higher bridge, but part of that's because of the creek. And again, it doesn't tie into existing grade until back past Morrisville Square, and then again, somewhere around the convenience center on the other side of Aviation. So again, very impactful and not necessarily a good option. And then the third option they looked at is again, moving it to the south, but not quite as much. It would require taking more private property, especially through the Cotton Place development, would not impact the park quite as much, but would still impact the park to some degree and still has some of the same concerns with not reaching grade until further out. And again, this one is around 35 feet high at the highest roadway elevation for the bridge. We provided this information to council as a way to help them understand some of the impacts, potential impacts of these alternatives. So as you can see here, under alternative three, which is the existing alignment, the most of the parcel, many of the parcels impacted west of NC-54 are already owned by the town. But, and then the closure impacts may be mitigated by improved roadwork. Under alternative five, which is the long sweep south, there's, most of the properties impacted are private, are undeveloped private properties, but it does have high impact to the town park. And then under alternative seven, it's much more impactful to developed private property and still has some impact to the town park. And you can see on the right side of the screen there, a visual representation of some of the impacts that we looked at. So with that said, DOT also looked at a couple of at-grade intersection improvement alternatives, which they're still looking at. Excuse me. One of those would be, and both of these at-grade alternatives are essentially quadrant loops, so they would be moving all the turning movements from 54, from Aviation and Morrisville Carpenter Road onto 54, moving those away from that intersection further to the west. And so essentially, the two alternatives are either going through the southeast quadrant, which would again, impact our town park and some of that private property through there, or going through the northeast quadrant, which would approximately follow Cotton Drive north and then would come out to NC-54. In both of these scenarios, the left turns would certainly all be moved to this quadrant loops. There may be an ability for some right turns still at the intersection, but the goal would be to move those left turns away so you could have more, you could have the lanes that are currently over the tracks be through lanes versus turn lanes. So currently, over the railroad tracks, we have one westbound lane, an eastbound left turn, an eastbound through, and an eastbound right. Doing something like this, you could change it to two westbound threes, two eastbound threes with the turning movements located elsewhere and having to utilize one of the quadrant loops. So as I've said, they've completed their initial evaluation alternatives, determined that the grade separation alternatives are not viable at this time, but they are still evaluating interim at-grade improvements as well as potentially making no improvements to the intersection. That will continue over the spring, and they don't really expect to reach a final decision until sometime later this year, most likely after another round of public workshops in either the spring or summer of this year, when DOT will bring either one or two at-grade alternatives out and get public comment on those. And so with that, that's all I have for you tonight. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
So Ben, what's our opportunity to provide feedback? There will be workshops this spring, you're saying?
Yeah, sometime later this spring or summer, or it could even be the fall, depending on NC DOT's timeline. One thing they've been focusing on more recently is the Crabtree Lake Crossing. So they're probably not going to want to do another round of workshops until they settle that crossing and can bring the entire corridor into the workshop and show what the improvement would be for the entire corridor. So it could actually go a little bit more into the fall before the workshops come, but sometime later this year, they do expect to have another round of workshops. They're funded to begin right-of-way acquisition utility relocations, I think if not next fiscal year, the year after. So they do need to try and get through this environmental phase this year so they can begin finalizing their plans to get onto right-of-way acquisition.
Want to ask Ben any question or comments?
I've got a ton of questions. The first easy question perhaps is, in our transportation plan, we kind of prioritize high, if you will, the extension of Airport Boulevard, right? Which essentially means we either need a overbridge or something, right? But with now the bridge coming up, or at least the one that has been talked about for McCrimmon, at that McCrimmon intersection, I suppose building two bridges right next to each other does not make, in my view, aesthetic sense or for that matter, practical sense.
Well, I think the Airport Boulevard grade separation does still provide functional worth. It would, it would provide an east-west connection between, at this point, if it were constructed, Davis Drive and the airport. And so, and it's a more direct east-west connection to the airport than McCrimmon Parkway is. And then one of the other, you know, reasons that we've always said we would like to see the Airport Boulevard grade separation put in is that it could, it's another grade separation that could take pressure off of the Morrisville Carpenter Road intersection. And potentially, you could, with some at-grade modifications of Morrisville Carpenter Road, maybe Morrisville Carpenter Road wouldn't need to be grade separated for a much longer time into the future if you had Airport and McCrimmon that could handle more of the traffic that would take it over the railroad.
So let me play devil's advocate, if I was the director of NC DOT, my first question would be, if I already have two grade separated, you know, crossways from Morrisville across the other side, why shouldn't I, given their number, rate of accidents at the, at this intersection, why shouldn't I close the intersection and reduce all the risk that is going on? Plus, you know, gives me the railway thoroughfare. What's, what's really the downside if I close the intersection?
Close it completely or grade separate?
Yeah, close it completely.
Close it completely, you, I think, you know, I would say, my guess would be DOT would not want to see that done. I don't think the town would want to see that done. It is, you know, you're, you would be closing two major thoroughfares, essentially dead-ending them, you know, Morrisville Carpenter Road would dead-end into nothing, and Aviation would dead-end into 54. So you'd have two four-lane major thoroughfares dead-ending, so DOT generally doesn't want to do that. And then that also does, you know, for Morrisville Carpenter Road, that would, that would sever a major regional route from 50, from Highway 55 to the airport.
But given the options we have, right, a 45-feet, a 35-feet bridge is not going to work either, right? So I don't see a viable alternative here that does not involve either doing some kind of tunneling or, you know, going around Town Hall Drive in some shape or form. I mean, ultimately, something has to give, right? Either we have to agree to a bridge that would go past Town Hall Drive and to the, you know, where the parks are, which I don't know whether we are all agreeable to that, right?
The, I think from the town's perspective and the reason the draft transportation plan is worded and, and the recommendations are in it are the way they are, is the hope would be that we, we can push off any grade separation of Morrisville Carpenter Road intersection for as long as possible. But when it does come, A, we want a seat at the table, and B, we would certainly want to work with, be able to work with DOT to minimize a lot of those impacts. I will say one thing about the alternatives that were shown, they were, DOT tried very hard to provide sort of worst-case alternatives using bare, you know, standard minimums and everything. There's, there's certainly some, some shrinking of footprints that could be done. There's ways to shrink the impacts to have, you know, if you, if you can get design exceptions through the DOT process, you can have greater grades going up and down the bridge, so it's not as long. So there's, there's certainly other options that can be, that can be looked at. Just with this initial quick look that DOT did as part of Aviation Widening Project, they didn't have the funds to do a full-blown feasibility study and really get into engineering. They were just trying to show, provide, look at a couple of alternatives, just see if it was even feasible with the funding currently allocated for the widening, to even look at grade separating, and they determined that it wasn't. And so, well, we're right now, you know, in a position where we just have to wait and see if a grade separation does get funded there, and once it does, we would certainly work with DOT.
But you don't plan based upon funding. You plan based upon, and then you work towards getting the funding, right? If you are going to say, well, let's hope that the bridge never gets built. It's like saying, let's hope, you know, Morrisville shrinks. It's not going to happen. We are going to have more and more traffic.
Yeah.
Right? We also know that it's, the number of accidents that happen at that intersection are higher, they are growing. So we can't just wait forever hoping something happens.
Well, that's why we still put the grade separation, the grade separation is still included in our plan so that we can make sure we have a seat at the table when and if DOT decides to fund the grade separation. The town is not going to fund the grade separation, it's not within our
Sure, understood.
... funding ability to do so, and I don't think the council has a desire to fund a grade separation of that location. However, we do want the seat at the table if and when DOT decides it's time to fund the grade separation. So it is in our plan, but I think most of the council at this point would prefer to see what can be done as an at-grade alternative and what can be done at other intersections in town, to take pressure off that intersection, to make it, you know, hopefully improve the safety of the intersection and make it last as long as possible without being grade separated.
Last question. To ensure our interests are aligned and not have NC DOT dictate us whatever plan they might come up with, what are we doing? Now, great, forget about funding, right? In terms of making that, if today, tomorrow, or day after, whenever they decide that we need to have a grade separation there, what are we as the town and town engineers doing to take a proposal or anything that matters that we, that would be acceptable to us, right? And that, that we can influence NC DOT to make things different? Because if I look at these current options, I don't think anybody on the council is going to accept them. So if, so that's not the case, we can't be just the naysayers, we have to be, at least come up with our own ideas that would say, here are some of the proposals I'm going to bring on the plate, you tell me why you can't do this.
And that's why, as part of their discussion of the draft conference transportation plan update, the council has put in, has added some policy programming recommendations in chapter five regarding grade separations. One is to look at grade separation, potential grade separations throughout town, but another is focused on this specific intersection to, you know, granted, there will be funding that will have to, the town will have to provide funding to take, to implement this recommendation, but there is recommendation in the plan that if adopted, at some point in the near fut, hopefully in the near future, the town would fund a study of this intersection, whether by itself or in coordination with DOT and Campo, to look at other options or look at all the options available for this intersection. So we do have language in our plan that as staff, once the plan's adopted, will have an implementation set we can take to council and say, okay, now it's time to do a study of this intersection and determine what we, you know, what our preference would be for the intersection, and we can take that to DOT.
So you're saying we can't even do ideation and do, you know, back-up-the-napkin pictures and say, here are some of the potential ideas until the town says, okay, here are the things that we can do?
If the, I mean, if the council or the town want to do that, they certainly, we certainly could. We don't have a lot of highway design expertise on staff, and so I don't know that we have the expertise or the time on staff to be able to do that at this time.
Okay.
And the grade separation's not a priority to DOT at this time. So it's, it's one of those things that we're probably, we probably will focus on other priorities first.
I wanted to thank you for doing this, Ben, bringing us up to speed. I'm impressed with your little summary that shows the impacts. And you put the Pew House, but you didn't put the Page House. One of those implementations would be severely compromised.
Yeah.
But I'm relieved that it looks like the separated grade options don't look viable at the moment, because that would have been like the Great Wall of Morrisville.
Yeah.
Seems to me that moving the intersection of the traffic away from the grade crossing is the sensible way to go and reduce. I know we've had, I think, three fatalities of that intersection. And those of us who drive over it from time to time, you know, wonder how on earth anybody could have gotten confused. But I'm older, and last time I drove through there at night, I thought, coming from the west towards the east and wanting to turn left on 54, there's a solid white line on my near side, and it's awfully tempting to follow that, and if I did follow that, I'd end up on the railroad track. And I suspect that's what happened to the elderly couple who unfortunately met their demise there. So is there any sort of interim immediate work? I know when Tony Tjocakis was here, some people looked at that, but have we?
There's been, and town manager Paige may be able to answer this a little bit more, but I know the Public Works Department and the town has worked with DOT and Duke Energy on getting additional lights around that intersection, additional streetlights around that intersection. And then there's been different striping that has been put in place over the years, and they've put some of those big reflectors out there. So I know there's been some initial, they did some initial striping and reflector work to try and improve the safety, and the town is funding installation of a couple of streetlights to try and light the intersection better. But other than that, I'm not aware of anything else that is, will be done.
Right, take that up offline, but thank you. So is Campo involved in giving some sort of direction and input to DOT? Because they seem to be sometimes our allies, and they seem to be the folks who listen to our transportation plan and present that to DOT.
Where Campo would come in on a project like this would be if it, if DOT puts up a grade separation project to go into the state transportation improvement program, which is, from the time it's, the project's proposed to go into the program through the scoring, it takes about two years, Campo would be, would run that process. And so we would have opportunities to provide input to Campo through that process as to whether what they call local priority points would be put on a, on the project that could increase its score or not. So that's one way that they would be useful and that they've helped us in the past. Another thing that we've talked about with them and why we put the recommendation in the transfer, in the draft transportation plan update, is that they do, they do studies quite often, and they'll do intersection studies. So one of the recommendations in the plan is to talk to them and see about working with them about doing a detailed intersection study of this intersection, looking at grade separation options, possibly at-grade options if DOT decides not to do anything. So we would certainly work with them on that, and that would be partially funded through their funds, which would mean the town would not have to fund all of the study.
And last question. We're doing Morrisville Carpenter kind of from the west, and it sort of ends up around here, and then they're doing more aviation from the east, and it sort of ends up around here. Is, you know, where does the jurisdiction of each one stop, and how come this most important intersection isn't looked at from both perspectives?
So for the town project, we decided early on that we didn't have the ability to really look at the intersection or the grade crossing as part of the Morrisville Carpenter Road widening. It would have, it would have cost a lot more money and taken a lot more time because of, because of having to work through issues with both NCRR and Norfolk Southern, who operates the railroad. So we made the decision as a town at that point to start our project right at the railroad corridor limits. And then when the DOT project came in, they did extend their study area across railroad tracks, actually to Page Street, so they could look at the intersection. That's when they've done these intersection alternatives and reviewed those. So DOT did look at the intersection a little bit more than we did through their stud, through their project. As far as right now, our project, when Morrisville Carpenter Road, when our Morrisville Carpenter Road project completes, they're going westbound, northbound, towards the airport on Morrisville Carpenter Road. You'll now have two complete lanes going up to the intersection with a third lane, a turn lane popping out, coming back westbound on Morrisville Carpenter Road. You won't have that second lane pop out till after you cross over the railroad tracks. However, with the DOT project, if they do move forward with one of these at-grade solutions, that existing eastbound left turn lane on Morrisville Carpenter Road to turn north onto 54 would become another westbound through lane. And so obviously, if DOT decides to do that, they'll have to come back over and redo some of the work we're going to do on Morrisville Carpenter Road, because they'll have to move the median a little bit. So that's still to be determined. Like I said, hopefully later, you know, by the end of this year, we'll know, have a better idea of what DOT is going to be proposing for the intersection.
And just on a historical nostalgic note, it was wonderful when Aviation just stopped at 54. It didn't continue. Morrisville Carpenter went the other side of where Benz-Bargenbahn used to be, and it stopped, and there were no traffic lights. And the ultimate was when they were constructing the intersection across, and we had Morrisville police officers who would hand them, one at Aviation and one at the then Morrisville Carpenter. And if they knew you were from Morrisville, I got, kind of got the feeling they would give you a little bit of priority. Those were the days.
But I will say, that alignment didn't work out so great for that moving truck, so, you know.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you, Ben.
I'm going to move on to item six, if anybody would like to make any public address to the Planning and Zoning Board at this time. Seeing none, I think we'll move to all business with public comment, none, all business? Business with public comment, 10 new business? It's wonderful how we make progress through these agendas. Courtney, number 11.
Okay, so what I have is just
So what I have is just really kind of a quick presentation, and this really came to fruition. I've received a couple of inquiries of, what exactly does the Planning and Zoning Board's role? And then what exactly is council's role? How do the two intertwine? And a lot of this had to do with differing decisions, zoning cases, where maybe council adopted a recommended approval, but y'all recommended denial, vice versa, and kind of the evolution of the transportation plan. So I thought I would talk a little bit about that. And I also had this inquiry of how come we're not going through the guidance, the really guidance statements from the, out of our administrative manual that you'll see with rezonings, as well as land use plan amendments? And so I thought I'd kind of cover that and give you an idea of just kind of a overview of the powers and duties of our, how those powers and duties, you know, have come to be, if you will, and then the difference between the UDO and the administrative manual, because they are very different. So first, I thought I'd cover unified development ordinance. And again, unified is actually the law. This is what we are all strictly required to adhere to. The law is really developed and based off of all the guidance that we receive from the comprehensive plan, but this is the nuts and bolts of what we have to do legally. I will say I did cut and paste textures out of there. I know that is like the worst thing to do, but I just wanted to put it there. It was easier than kind of putting some other stuff. But there's a couple of different authorities that are derived from the UDO. And so one, what the Planning and Zoning Board's role has to be consistent with state statute, but it also becomes consistent with any advisory board rules that come from council or any additional powers granted to you through the UDO. So one of your authorities is you are a advisory board. It's noted as such, and you have an advisory role in development applications. You really have one exception kind of to the rule, or you used to, that doesn't even exist anymore for minor subdivision, but really you have this advisory role when it comes to all the different development applications. That includes both the legislative, which is your rezonies, as well as your administrative, which is the site plans that you'll see. The next, it clearly states that your job is to prepare the comprehensive plan, and you're to formulate it, and you're to maintain it. Those are the two words pulled out of the code. And I mentioned this recently to one of the board members, Courtney, what's the comprehensive plan exactly? You know, we talk about the land use plan, we talk about the transportation plan. Comprehensive plan is all those plans and policies from the town that we use to guide growth and development. Here's some sampling, but it includes the Parks and Recs Master Plan, telecommunications plan. All of those were prepared, and if you really look, our zoning map is based off the land use plan. Our current telecommunications regulations are based off of the telecommunications plan. We don't have any actually specific code requirements related to the Act of Kids Strategic Plan, but you'll see a lot of the events and activities hosted out of the planning department are related to that. And the Parks and Recs Master Plan, we actually, the planning department, believe it or not, through some of the action of this board, were the ones that collect all of the Parkland Payment and Lou. And any special additional conditions that may come out as a recommendation that then become the actual rezoning case, we end up collecting those as well. And those are some of the guidance that has led to that point. Next is studies. So you have the ability to prepare studies, ask staff to prepare studies, and it can be on a variety of things. It can be a demographic study, it can be an environmental study, school, park, economics. I think one of the best examples of whether you realize this is what y'all are directing us to do, is when you asked us to go back and do some more modeling for the Crabtree Crossing. What you may not have realized, we had to amend our contract to do that. We went and did some more modeling. So that was one of your roles, that you could ask for additional information and, and studies to really get back to the preparation of the comprehensive plan. So those are some of the basic roles as outlined in the UDO. Again, those are your legally required things that are set forth in the code. Now we're going to move on to kind of the town council and then their powers and duties. There's going to be some overlap, believe it or not. They have the ability to review and provide recommendations, and they're a decision-making body as well, just like this board is. If you get that to the same table that I pulled out of the code, theirs just are a little bit different. They have more decision-making authority. And you get down to, they are the ones who set the fees for all the applications that we review. They're the ones that actually establish the fees. It's folded into the annual budget, but that's another of their responsibilities that are brought through the UDO. And they actually adopt a schedule of several penalties. So if you look, there are specific penalties if you reinstall illegal signs, there's penalties for tree removal, they're all established by the council. Oddly enough, you recommend, you have recommendations that are built in, since they're all, you know, through an ordinance, so you're a recommendation body, but they're the ones that actually enact those. And then lastly, they kind of have this other actions that basically that says, any authority that wasn't granted to the Board of Adjustment, the Planning and Zoning Board, basically authorized by state law, they can go ahead and assign or delegate those, they can do it to themselves or to anybody else. It's kind of this another kind of broad brush. So it's a really high overview, but, whoa, that gives you, hopefully we solved that problem. It gives you a general idea of, sorry, just lost my presentation, of the different responsibilities of the Planning and Zoning Board and Town Council. So the next item that we have is the administrative manual. I'm willing to bet most of you don't even have a clue this exists, and it's really a partner to the UDO. It's not something we necessarily talk about a lot at the board level, but it's something that's used by applicants every single time. It's where they're going to go find our fee schedule, it's where they're going to find applications, it's where they're going to find checklists, our entire plant schedule, what's permitted to be installed in the town for vegetation, that's located in there. Lots of different references and contacts, it's kind of a one-stop shop. If you, you know, you come in, you know you're going to have PS and C, you know you're going to have Duke Energy involved, there's some contact information in there as well. And really, it's a manual. So the fundamental difference between the UDO, law, this is a manual, so it's guidance. There's nothing specifically required in here. You'll find that the UDO references it. So for example, it says that you meet all the requirements of X development application as identified in the administrative manual. Gives us the ability to update things, doesn't have to go to council for updates, does not come to this board for updates. So something as simple as a typo, date changes of due dates, we update it annually, and it has greater flexibility. And here's the purpose, I pulled it directly out of the first page of the document, but I run it along guidance. It's all this document truly is, is to guide decisions, to guide applicants. And then it goes through, and it breaks down different types of applications. I can send the link to everybody to the administrative manual. I don't expect you to read this, but really what we pull out is this little section right here, and then I blew it up so everybody can actually read it. So on all our rezoning cases and our land use plan amendments, we give these guidance statements for you to consider when evaluating whether or not the request is or isn't appropriate, and it helps to guide your recommendation. So there's five bullet points that are tied to comprehensive plan. Again, that includes the land use plan. And, you know, the questions that you can ask yourself are, you know, is this necessary due to changing conditions? You know, for example, has everything else around it developed that makes this, is this a logical change in our land use designation? You can also say the current plan was adopted in 2009. Time is a change, but it's extremely subjective, and you're able to kind of infer whether you think it has happened or you don't think it has happened, I guess is a great way to describe it. And then you go on, does it address a community need? For example, now, are they proposing a particular use that wouldn't otherwise be allowed in that zoning? Is there a need for that use? You can ask yes or no. Again, it's somewhat subjective, but I think it's for each of you to kind of decide, and it helps to formulate your decision. And again, we have the other three points, I'm not going to go through each one, that you can consider. You don't ever have to say yes to all of them. Don't have to say no to all of them to inform your decision. Again, it's just for guidance. And then the same thing for the zoning map. These same standards are applied in here. There are actually more standards, and then I kind of blew it up. So there's these questions here that you can ask. They're somewhat similar, but one of the questions is that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, and so we have this consistency statement. It's getting at the heart of that. State law does not require any rezoning to be consistent with a land use plan. State law does also not require us to amend our land use plan in order to rezone. Recent legislations basically said if we rezone from X to Y, the land use plan automatically changes as a result. We've just had a policy for years that we actually have land use plan decisions. We think it's good that we have a nice paperwork trail of how that changed occurred over time, and that's the reason why we continue to bring forward land use plan amendments, even though we don't have to by law. And then it goes through some other ones that we just include. Again, you don't have to answer yes to vote in the affirmative to all of them. You also don't have to say no to all of them to recommend denial. It's not necessarily, they're just guidance statements. So I'm going to kind of bring it back over to you, turn it back over to the chair, and I'm happy to answer any questions or comments that you have, kind of regarding both the roles and duties of the Planning and Zoning Board and Town Council, as well as those guidance statements that we include with our packages.
Thank you, Courtney. I think it's always good to occasionally take stock and think about, are we really doing what we should be doing? Are there ways that we can improve? Tim's questions and comments was kind of a good trigger. I'm, I'm well aware that I've been doing this for a long time, and there's, there's a risk that practice doesn't make perfect, it just makes it permanent. Certainly willing to, to look at some changes. My view is that we have a lucky, a lucky spot in that we get to weigh in and make recommendations, and then the lucky folks at the council actually make the hard decisions. So this is a better spot to be, I think. I think we're supposed to be less political. It can be, as you said, more subjective, and we have a set of guidelines and guidance, but we have the flexibility to move. That's kind of an overview. Some of the things I've read about planning and zoning boards over the years, the most consistent theme seems to be that as a good planning and zoning board member, we are supposed to be good listeners, members of the public, to the people who make presentations here, to developers, to council members, and, you know, think very seriously about what we've heard and what our view of the future of the town would be. I think about some of the things that we've done over the past many years, and what pleases me is the number of times where the developer will change their proposal in some way. Sometimes it's a small way. But we are part of that process that I think makes the development proposal that goes to council a little bit better. And that's something that we can do by trimming away and asking questions and making sure that the developer takes account of what the public is saying. And then I've noticed that we're sometimes a slightly less formal, slightly less airy venue for members of the public who are not used to speaking, to come before us and kind of do a dry run or a rehearsal, and that makes it easier for them when they do go before council, and it also helps council, because we sometimes trim down the number of people who subsequently speak to council. So there are sort of little things that we, that we do as part of our process. But Tim, I'm going to invite you to sort of make some comments and see if some of your questions are answered.
First of all, I appreciate that, and recognizing as a newbie here, tremendous to learn from both this group and councils as well. If you go back one slide for me, you know, when I looked at this and after listening for a while, just the way that it's worded, it gives the indication to me that these are things that should be weighted to a degree, that as you're, as you're walking through a decision-making process, I'm always leery of like a subjective decision-making process, because the consistency by which that subjectivity is applied can vary, right? So when I, when I look at these statements, what, you know, I would like to see is, you know, which are the most important? You know, how are they weighted? You know, are we looking at them consistently? And, you know, are there any opt-outs? So if I was, you know, walking through these, are there clear screening criteria? You know, that they're sort of the, the yes or no questions that we could look at in a particular project and say, you know, this does no harm, yes, clear, okay, let's move on. And then, you know, if we move on, you know, there may be a next series of questions that confirm consistency with plan, and it becomes a little bit easier. But then there becomes this series of items in here that I think require more discussion and debate, and that, that goes into, you know, things around changing conditions. So whether it be public facilities or property impact or traffic or all of those, you know, that is something that I think is a meteor item that we should have a view of how we get to our decisions. Because as I, as I've listened, over the past few times where something's been proposed, we make our recommendation to go to council, and I'm interested in how that's taken on, but then also how those decisions are made, and are the same criteria apply? Because if our recommendation is, you know, approved or not approved, I understand, but I would, I would really like to know the process and decision-making that they avoid to make that decision, because then I would feel much better about it. So that's kind of overall a big piece. But then, you know, secondarily, I mean, you know, there's a couple of things that have occurred to me around, and, oh, I can go on for a second, but around how we do some analysis. So, you know, one of the biggest things, and to your point about listening to the community, has been traffic as a big issue within, in Morrisville. Well, as I've listened to, you know, folks talk about this, when we get a view from the experts, they'll give us a, what I'm talking about is a macro assessment of traffic. So they'll look at the impact analysis, and that will be akin to, we're building something on this road, and there are so many cars that go through it, and what we're going to look at is the number of cars, in addition to every car that goes through that during the course of a given day. And it seems to me that that's looking at like, adding a couple of stars to the sky, right? It's not as big of an impact, which, you know, the way that they're doing that makes sense, if you look at it from that perspective. What I look at it is a micro assessment. So if you think about looking at traffic, how it pertains to entry points and exit points at a specific instance. So the example recently of the Davis Project, the one there, instead of comparing traffic throughput during the course of a day and getting a sense, well, we're only adding X amount of cars to that, what I'm really interested in is how many new vehicles are entering and exiting from that specific spot at that specific time? Because if you look at it that way, it doubles, triples, quadruples the impact, and, you know, all you have to do there is look out the door. When, when you're in the morning and you're going to rush hour, you see it's, it's already congested. You're adding at that time, at that specific time. So part of it, my concern around this is, number one, how we do the analysis? You know, what factors we're looking at? The second concern that I have is the ability to do a postmortem on those analyses. So these folks, experts, will give us, you know, time-tested views of traffic, but to my understanding, they're never held to account. They're never asked to come back, okay, well, show me your modeling after five years have passed. How accurate was it? So we get some benefit or some concession at the moment, but there's no penalty if they're wrong. There's, we just kind of take whatever's there. And I use the example on traffic, but I think it can be applicable to any other element that we're talking about, schools. We get an estimate of how many folks will be there, but there's never any postmortem. You're kind of just left to that, and my guess is there's an underestimation of what happens. And so we're stuck with that. So, you know, I think those are, you know, some things that, that when we tweak impact, and we can use it, you know, so for traffic, for schools, for use on community services, and then I think the other thing that, that came up in this last project, and the last point for me on this, is, you know, affordable low-income housing that was into a study. I think that was perceived as a benefit in a plan, which certainly, I think, to certain constituents could be. However, there's, to my knowledge, no assessment of impact again five years. Someone, you know, you lived in or close to those things, they usually expand, they don't contract. So what I'd be looking for is, you know, what is actually going to happen? So what I'd be looking for is, you know, what is actually going to happen over time? And being able to take a look at that. And I think those are kind of just tweaks that I've noticed as I've listened, you know, that are concerned within these rules, if that's helpful.
I think it's important that we balance. You mentioned you wanted things that were kind of less subjective. I don't want us to be, what extreme would be to have everything categorized with weighting and numbers and objectivity, might just as well employ a computer to do that. So I think it has to be the balance, and that's sometimes the tricky part. I like your idea of a postmortem, especially on the specifics of traffic and school. The note I made before I came tonight was that it would be after we have presented a recommendation to council, to kind of follow that through and see how did it morph between what we saw and what council approved? What could we have done better to help?
To that degree, I mean, you mentioned the studies part, and I don't know if this falls into that category, but, I mean, could that be part of, you know, future plans where we request that? And to have folks pay for that? So if that falls within the guidelines, but that you'll give an estimate of what is, a traffic estimate, but then there's a postmortem built into the project plan that could be paid for, and then that might...
So legally, I can't go after them or ask for it after the fact. We don't have a legal recourse for that. So can we go back and do a better evaluation? Yeah, there's new technology that's available now. Actually, in the process, it's one of the goals from the strategic plan, to take a better look at kind of incremental sections. So basically, if I'm traveling from this intersection down to the Davis intersection, you know, what are those impacts, origin, destination? We're requesting funding for it. I mean, we've currently put the request in for the funding, let council know that it was coming as part of the budget. So who pays for it? The taxpayers pay for that postmortem allowance, which is fine. I mean, that's, the reality is you have something new coming on more, and you're receiving tax dollars for that, so it helps to cover the cost of that. That's going to be possible with this new technology that we're looking into purchasing. It's basically going to use cellphone data to track, it's GPS-based, and so it can pull from cell tower to cell tower and start reading where people are coming into the town and exiting from the town. You know, so for example, when I come and commute every morning, you know, I come down 540, and it will be able to say this person's coming from 540, they then take the aviation, they take the aviation exit, they then come to airport, they're heading down, you know, 540, or bound 54, and they're landing over here at 260B Town Hall Drive. We will get into that level of detail. Won't be me per se, but they can see how many people and what the impacts are. And so we are, again, exploring that, so that can be answered. You can also sometimes, without a study, see the impacts are positive. For example, Park West Village, you look at all the improvements they made along there. I mean, they put four lanes basically in front of their project on 54, which you get into the two-lane section when you cross further down is what you used to experience there. So you can say that even with all of that development of that 100-plus acres, they were able to improve the intersection to be able to handle their impact plus the existing. And understand the TIA's, when they're prepared to, it's not just what is this one development doing at this one, you know, this one intersection. We actually take a look at what are all the projects that are approved within a certain area. So all the Carpenter Village stuff that's being expanded on the north side of Morrisville Carpenter Road, that was all included. So you take, you know, what are the trips generated from those projects? Then you also put a multiplier on it in future, you know, what's the growth rate? There's a growth rate factor that goes into that. And you took a look at all the road transportation. So the reason why there was a 6% impact at one of the intersections is because Morrisville Carpenter Road will be completely widened to four lanes prior to that being constructed, or about the same time it comes online. So that's why that impact was nominal, really in the big scheme of things, because it's taking not just taking those, you know, 20 extra vehicles in this peak hour at right now, it's with all that information, what is its impact? So it's looking into the future. And it really is a model that's used across the country. What you can change is some of your thresholds of when you require the modeling to occur. We have fairly low thresholds. We've looked at even lowering them even further. We have the ability to do that. So basically, you come in, you're required to prepare the TIA. And we've even looked into, we're proposing on making some changes, basically, if somebody comes in with a phase one and then purchases additional lane for a phase two, they're going to name them something different, so they're not really a phase one, phase two, that you can't then get exempt from the TIA. You become a cumulative impact, and so now you have to pick up the original phase plus phase two, even if they're named differently. So those are the types of things where we can go back and say, what can we improve? What does statute allow us to do? Understanding that what makes us so different in North Carolina than across the country, there's some exceptions, is we cannot create any regulations that are not explicitly provided or granted to us from the statute. So for example, we, if we found that the generation numbers for Wake County were completely wrong, you know, for, they're telling us that this will produce X number of students, we're finding it's X times three. We have no legal authority to have adequate public facility ordinances, which is what those are in Morrisville. So even if we found the data was wrong, we could update it and say this is what we think it's going to be, create our own number, not use the one provided to us from Wake County Public Schools, but it's still just a number. I mean, because we do not have the ability to charge any type of impact fees.
That is fine, but having a realistic number helps us in making an informed decision. But my one year has been a bit of, how should I say? Taking deep breaths in a lot of times when we look at these things and say, you know, a lot of times I just feel like we are rubber stamping a lot of the things that come to us.
But you don't have to do that. When it's legislative, you don't have to, and I think that's the important message.
Yeah, but it also comes down to this whole thing around land use plan that we create, right? And the question really comes down to is, we are trying to create a land use plan, but then we all get all these exceptions that we need to approve because it is somebody's private land or in an area that he wants to sell or she wants to sell, right? And then what do you do with that, right? So you get conflicted between those two, but at the same time, we have to have a thought process of how do we want to really grow this town, which is, you know, which is at a traffic intersection for good or bad, and we have to recognize that, right? And how do you deal with, even if Morrisville doesn't grow and adjoining towns grow, you still have, are going to have more traffic, right?
And then you're not increasing your tax base to help then invest into your infrastructure.
So that's what I'm saying, is we have to balance that, but at the same time, we also have to think about what is the character of this town that we want to build? And that's where I struggle with some of the applications that come over way. And the question really, like, the one I'm still agitated about is the one, the one that we approved at the Evans Road and the new McCrimmon intersection that we are doing is, we really didn't have much leeway in what we could do about that. I mean, I would wish that we could have had the ability to say, the intent of multi-use plan is to say that there is, it's not just apartments, right? And the point being, yes, the word's multi-use plan can be used many different ways, but the intent was that it is not just full of apartments, right? And the question really comes down to is, how can we influence those things where it is not clear, but then we could really put the pedals down and say, nope, you can't, you can't do this, even if you meet, in theory, the principles of what is laid out.
So I think in that particular instance, so there's two things involved, if you're referring to the Bainbridge Apartments. At the intersection, it's the, for me, I'm just going to call it the Northwest for simplicity. So in that particular instance, there's two questions really at play. The first question is, it was, you know, should it be a neighborhood? Which I believe may have been, I think it may have already been an activity center. I believe it was actually a business activity center. So really, the question was, did you want to rezone it to conditional or general, you know, depending on the application type? That is one of those ones where if you honestly thought that you did not want to see apartments at four quadrants, you wanted to see what was going to happen in other quadrants, you can recommend denial. I mean, wholeheartedly, activity centers are not about one use, it's about multiple uses over the entire activity center district itself. The way financing rules tend to work, you're going to find, one builder will build one thing at one quadrant, another builder may build another thing. But if you look at the district as a whole, does it provide employment opportunities? Does it provide retail opportunities? Does it provide housing opportunities? So not looking at it necessarily. So you already had one quadrant that had housing. So then you had to ask yourself, do we want another quadrant that had housing, yes or no? And those are where you're going to have to say, okay, is there a demonstrated community needed at that point? Maybe you needed four out of the five, you know, two out of the four quadrants, 50% housing there, you know? And I will say the comprehensive plan currently doesn't provide good guidance on the appropriate percentage of mixes.
Yeah.
Now, if you take a look at the Wood Partners one going through now, you have two quadrants that are 100% commercial, then you have a quadrant that has mixed use, so it's, you know, retail commercial on the first floor, non-residential multifamily on the second and third, then there's one freestanding multifamily building, and the rest are town homes. So then you're looking at the other quadrant, do you add residential? You know, because right now you have a little bit of residential, the two older homes. You also have CVS, which is a commercial, but then the balance become residential to support that activity. And those are the ones where maybe it's not as easy as a decision necessarily. But understand that when they come before you and they are legislative, you are not required to say yes or recommend yes, you're not required to recommend no. And honestly, you're not even required to give any new reason behind a recommendation. I mean, you can say, you can get down to some of the things that you don't believe is consistent with these components, you're welcome to do that, but you are not required to. It's legislative, and it's okay to say yes, and it's okay to say no without specific reasoning. And I will say, there's a clearinghouse, the number of people that come and meet with us for rezonings. I mean, you probably see one tenth, you know, so there's a round one of a kind of a clearing, you know, just through the planning department, before it even reaches this board. And so really, you're round two, for y'all to take another look at it. But I would say the investment is there by the developer, but it's just that it's an investment. It's a known risk that they're taking when they do their due diligence to move forward. They haven't designed a plan, you know, they haven't done, I mean, there's not, you know, half a million dollar in design work. You know, it's the normal due diligence that any developer looking for that site is going to do if they're looking to rezone it. So that part, I always say discount. You have to look at, is what proposed best for the town? You know, it's not what's best for that parcel. You know, you need to look at the kind of, if it's an activity center, is it good for the activity center? Then you say, is it good for the town? I mean, that's where you have that flexibility, and you don't have to worry necessarily about some of the political noise.
To that point, right, I agree with what Tim said, right? When our acceptance or approval or denial of a particular rezoning, or for that matter, even a plan, right? When it goes to the council, they get to hear or listen to some of the reasonings we may have had in approving or denying certain, you know, recommendation. In other words, let me put it this way, do they hear the thought process that went into the recommendation, right?
So we provide them with copies of the draft minutes, typically their draft, when they go to them, they're pretty much in the final form. You know, occasionally we'll change some wording, but they're pretty much in the final form. So they are provided that copy, the audio is available to listen to as well. Some council members I know go and listen to the audio, some council members probably, I know, read all the minutes. I've had them call and ask me, they're like, you know, it says this, can you provide a little more depth? So that I can tell you, it's available. Now, whether each individual council member chooses to invest that time, I can't answer that question, but it's certainly made available.
A process question for me. So in the last issue that we had where it was voted on, there was affirmation vote of four to two, but it needed, didn't pass because it needed a supermajority vote, but two weeks later, they're going to vote again, or they'll vote again in the future, and it only requires a four to two. How does that work? So it seems like it's...
It's statute, it's North Carolina statute. And it requires for any ordinance, so ordinance is a law, that you have to have two-thirds of the members. So it's not who's present, so say there was a vacant position, it would still go off of what your potential full membership. So in our case, since there are seven members of council, in order for any law to pass on that first vote or the first reading, it has to have at least five members vote in the affirmative. So it's not that the motion failed, it just didn't have that two-thirds requirement according to statute. So it has to go back for a second reading. Votes can change, you know, it could become a no, even though it was in the affirmative, it could be in the negative, or it could have a fourth, you know, three vote again, just needs four to pass, second reading.
So my understanding then is that the first time around, it has a higher requirement, but now the second time is a lower requirement? So if you look at that, is it, I mean, can it not be perceived as, hey, you're kicking it down the road for a couple of weeks or time, and the same folks could just get it passed? You don't need, the requirement seems to lessen on the second turn. Is that accurate?
I suppose you could view it that way. I mean, it gives an opportunity for the elected bodies that are making those vote, if there's any new information or different information that needs to be heard. It could influence the outcome. And so you do have, sometimes it can pass the first reading and fail the second reading. It's just the way statutes, you know, set up. I wouldn't say it's necessarily kicking the can, it just, if you're going to make a law, and it's going to pass the first reading, they're looking for a very strong, you know, supermajority or two-thirds.
About why they did that? That's where the legislature focused.
I don't want us to go on too long on this. Arlene, any comment?
I thank you for that explanation of the traffic impact because, and it still can seem this way, it can seem disingenuous, like the thing that was just approved at Davis and Morrisville Carpenter, almost approved or getting to be approved. It's like, you know, I'm just throwing out figures, oh, we're only going to throw 20 extra cars out per hour. And it's like, well, that's nice, but how about all the thousands of cars that are coming off 55 down Morrisville Carpenter, past Feral Farms, handing up at Davis?
What about that? That's the thing, what about that? What are we going to do? We can't put a toll gate up there.
I'd love to.
I mean, what you guys are saying is that engineers who are regulated by a board that could lose their license are making up numbers out of whole cloth and lying. And that's, I mean, I just don't believe that that's what's happening.
I don't think they're taking everything into account.
I mean, there's a manual, there's like accepted science that goes behind these, and they're stamping their seal on there. That actually means something in this state. I mean, I just don't understand why there's such...
It just comes across to me as disingenuous.
I appreciate it. I mean, you're right. I mean, so for them to have the impact of the 10 cars, but then what about the other 50 developments that's, you know, having to impact the 10 cars? But should that developer be held responsible for all those other developments? I mean, that's part of the question, too. Law says no. You know, law says that you're proportionally.
Should we allow it to happen if we can't, should we allow it to go forward if we have a choice not to?
And that's the question that each of you have to make every single time that you are providing a recommendation.
I mean, we tried that for a long time, and now we are where we are. I mean, we had the head in the sand council for a long time, and the roads got built, we didn't work with the state, we didn't have a lot of stuff that happened, and it got us a lot of development that is really taking up space, it isn't even that good. I don't know, I just don't know that that's...
Well, I was thinking...
You know, Apex exists, Cary exists, Durham exists, RTP isn't going to move anytime soon. I mean, all those things are only going to become more of a factor. I mean, I just, we need to try to do the best we can, but I just, it seems like adding these other things don't exist is not helping us.
I don't think that's what I'm saying. I think I'm saying the whole impact is...
Or that we can control those things, I guess.
Right. What can we control, and what can't we? And also, just real quick... And also, just real quick, I like the idea of postmortems. I don't know how we would work out that process. And I also think that we need to better define neighborhood activity center and multi-use because I feel like, I don't know what I feel like. I just don't feel like we had an accurate idea of what that could mean in its, in its totality.
And I think we're going to have that outcome as part of the land use plan update. I agree. I mean, it's one of those ones that needs better definition. Like if somebody comes through the mixed use plan development district, like the aviation landing, it's a cap, I mean, it's an 80/20. You know, at no point in time can you have more than 80% residential. That's the way that one's set up. We're actually going to be preparing one for the Main Street district. So somebody can come through and do one for the Main Street district. There's going to be proportional caps associated with that as well. Do you set up that same? It, it's hard to do it on a parcel by parcel basis. Financing, I mean, financing, if you look at the projects that come through, they don't use traditional financing options to have mixed use development. It's usually a private entity that has a fair amount of money and is willing to take on that risk. And there's not necessarily banks involved. Or you have certain investment groups that are willing to take on those risks that you don't get through your, you know, traditional bank financing options. So the question then is, do you start setting those same parameters within that district? So if the district itself is, you know, 50 acres, do you say of that 50 acres, no more than X can be residential? You know, what happens on that X? Density is what density can be maybe, you know, so we don't get into the 80/20 mix. But we're like, you know what? This percentage of acreage can be dedicated to the residential and that's it. And once you get to the point where you know you're hitting a certain threshold, then you deny applications because you can no longer meet those thresholds. And so you basically go and take that guidance that should come out of the land use plan update and then we're going to change it into the law through the actual UDO.
And the last thing I would say is, let's say the Planning and Zoning Board votes against something and then town council goes ahead and approves it. Not that they have to justify because they're elected, they're the decision-making body. But I know I would like to know what other factors went into that decision that maybe we overlooked, that we didn't take into consideration? Like, why was there a disconnect between what we thought and what council thought?
And, you know, it could be a variety of things because it's been politics at that point sometimes. Changing conditions. So I know we've had some where you're like, we recommend approval, but we would like to see conditions related to. So you can see a different vote on that. I think we have like aviation landing going through. Staff's recommendation was, you know, approval subject condition regarding burial of lines. Your recommendation was approval subject to the burial of lines. If we find they don't want to, you'll find staff's recommendation may very well change towards the end due denial. You know, so at that point, you have staffs recommending denial. You still, your recommendation stands and then you're going to have council. In the particular case that was just voted on, you know, planning departments recommending approval, planning and zoning board recommending denial. And from where I stand, that's all okay. You know, is we all are coming from it from different perspectives and there's nothing wrong with our perspectives. That's honestly what makes the process really good. You know, if everybody takes a good look and really thinks long and hard about what's good for the town, then I think at the end of the day, good thought, good energy went into the process and we can all be proud of it at the end of the day, regardless of what the outcome is, even if it ends up being different than where people stand. You have to understand, a lot of times there are projects that are administrative that get approved. I can't stand. I mean, and that's just the way it works, you know? But I'm still, at the end of the day, I'm required to say, okay, we're approving it, it met the standards. But then you have to ask, why were the standards that way and what should we do? And that's exactly what you're saying. You're like, we don't like that an activity center can have all multifamily. How can we change that? So one, we need to have a land use process that identifies what people really want in these activity centers. It's different. And unfortunately, the process is never necessarily fast, but it yields a good result at the end. And I think that's what's so important and kind of great about the process.
I wouldn't always assume that it means that there's a disconnect between yourselves and council. I mean, that could, you know, potentially be the case, you know, from time to time. But this, the project I think we're all talking about, regardless of what you think about the overriding issue of, you know, is, you know, multifamily, is the proposed land use, you know, a good use of that corner? I think everyone would agree that the project morphed and is a better project. I don't think that would have happened to the extent that it did if it came out of this board with a positive recommendation. That recommendation for denial makes a strong statement to the council. It makes a strong statement to the developer and it played a large role in the changes that were subsequently made, you know, as the project moved forward beyond this board.
Thank you, Michelle. Lee, I'm going to give you your opportunity. It's been interesting tonight to have a much more spirited debate, which is good, which is good. And an opportunity for sort of to think about it. I think there is a wonderful opportunity coming up and that's the land use plan. And this is a very good preparation for that. Now, over the years, we've occasionally had joint meetings with the council. That might be something that we can try and work into their busy schedule to, what they would like us to do, the opportunity to say something different or-
Yeah, no, all I was going to say, it's not about being in sync because I don't agree that we need to be in sync with the towns because that is kind of then going to say that whatever is the composition of the town, you know, we kind of go along with their thought process. I, I don't like, I think we still need to be autonomous and give our, our input. The only point I was on is, how do they hear, to, to ensure, to, to your point, right? If we have a meeting as opposed to living up to them to just read through some of it? If, if there is un-major issues, right? Not on individual cases, but think about the transportation plan, think about the land use plan, et cetera, et cetera, where some of our rationale on contentious issues like the crab tree crossing, right? While we said yes to the crab tree crossing, but I'm not sure based upon some of the feedback I got firsthand, whether some of our rationale was understood by the mem, by the council members, right? So those kinds of things, like the major ones, it would be nice to have at least a opportunity to hear our thoughts. That's, that's what I was.
And we always have an opportunity to make our thoughts known to council members by, by talking to them proactively.
Yeah.
And I, I do have a little bit of empathy and sympathy for them because they have enormous plate of stuff to go through. Another thing while we're talking about, you know, what we do and, and sort of broad brush things, I've had the opportunity to be at two other municipalities planning and zoning board meetings. Always thought it would be great if we could go and sit in on some of those in Cary, Apex, Equave Arena, wherever, to see how they operate. And that's an idea that I floated to you, Courtney. The one question I have is whether that would be breaking the sunshine laws because we'd have a meeting.
You're allowed to attend. I mean, you know, there were several council members, they didn't sit together. So I think if you went and you paired off two and two, you'd be okay. Yeah, there's not a problem in doing that. And I think if all seven of you kind of congregated, sat on the same row together, started talking, then there may be some problems, but, you know, learning from others through observation.
I think it would unnerve the other planning and zoning board if we had as sad as seven people in one group. But, so I will try and get some, some contact information and float where they're meeting and see if we can formally do that.
Absolutely.
Anything else on this topic before we move to 11B?
Thank you very much for, this was much needed. And I'm glad you're staying behind today to give us this insight, so thank you.
Gave me an opportunity to spend the day of love with y'all.
It's mutual, assured.
Okay, I actually have two little things. So one is the newsletter and I'll cover that and then I'll just cover one additional item. So there were no new development applications or actually approvals, administrative approvals. In the month of January, it's not terribly uncommon. We see things submitted based off when construction schedules kind of start and end. So it's not surprising we are not seeing a lot, but we're going to start to see a pickup again. I'm here soon, no doubt. There were two approvals by council. You had Broadstone Trailside and Bainbridge Aviation Crossing. Both of those were multifamily developments. There was also a zoning and land use map amendments and that was for the Kits Creek Road as well as Lewis Stevenson. Both those were related to the ETJ expansion. Lastly, is we are in the process of updating our hazard mitigation plan. It's a multi-jurisdictional one, it's heading through the county. Brad is representing the town with Dylan as his partner in crime. Actually, no cost to the town for this other than our time for this one. The county is covering the cost and the last update of the plan was covered through a grant from FEMA. There are going to be future dates announced. They haven't been announced yet, where basically it's public input on some of the different goals and initiatives that can go into that plan. The other little thing that I was going to add is I know that you were sent an email. Hopefully you all received it from Ben regarding some joint meeting dates. So in the spirit of, one, our timelines are really long and so we're looking at ways to compress. We can shave four to six weeks off a timeline by having joint meetings. And so instead of each of you doing separate, the same exercise at two different times, the thought is to get both the planning and zoning board and the town council into a work session together. You'll end up with several, at least I know for the one that's coming up, there'll be several little tables. You'll all be kind of mixed up together and you will be, it's a really fun activity related to building your own kind of public transportation system. That's all I'm really going to tell you, other than you're going to have a budget and you're going to be required to meet your budget. So not to bring any fake dollars with you to the game. But it's going to be a fun little exercise and I think it's an opportunity for the two to work together. And then it helps to improve our timeline of the projects as well. So we can, hopefully, it'll be adopted in about seven months is what our estimated timeline is. So taking something that's a year and folding it down to about seven months through some joint meetings. There's another one that he referenced in his email as well, but I just wanted to make sure that you marked your calendar, that we are, we're going to be holding that again on March the 25th. So, which is a regularly scheduled town council work session. That's all that I have, so I'm going to turn it back over to the chair.
Thank you, Courtney. So board comments, Tim?
Thanks for everybody being here.
Thank you and happy well-intents to everybody.
Well, the one that I had was to talk about the Woods Partner Development at Davis Strive and Morrisville Carpenter. After our planning and zoning board meeting, the representative from the developer asked to talk to me. So we went to McDonald's, which was kind of the, the level of the place I thought we should start at. And it's close to the intersection. And we talked about, you know, how she, the representative, could mitigate and change the proposal. So I was pleased to say that, to see that she had already taken into account some of the comments that we had made and some of the comments from the residents. Made a number of, of moves. I felt that, that as it was then proposed, you know, the latest proposal was something that I would support. So I, I made that note. Want to let you know that I wasn't going behind the back and I was presenting that really as a, as a personal opinion. Interesting to see at the very last minute, they introduced the idea of workforce housing, which was another question that they gave. So, I mean, it looks as though it has every likelihood of being a very, finding they get the three and two-thirds council members. Anything else from any of the board members?
No.
So in that case, I will, upcoming events, where we can look for those. No term expirations coming up, so item 15, entertain.
I'll move to adjourn the meeting.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you.